I'll call the meeting to order at seven oh four. And the first item is the minutes from July ninth.
I was not here.
I can't remember, I don't think I was either, because that was right after I started teaching.
You weren't. Yeah. You were in fact not here.
Yeah, I was. I was prepping for the next day.
Yeah.
Summer went.
Yes. So do we have a motion to accept who presented?
I'll move to accept this as presented.
A second.
Sure.
And anybody opposed? Okay, I don't see any public here. So that brings us.
Doesn't look like it.
So that brings us to management plans.
Yes, so I guess we last met back in July and back in July. We had the management plan template that I proposed as well as a bunch of the old ones. And I think that what had been meandered towards as next steps was for people to start thinking about, how would we take this management plan and apply it to the old ones with the information that we know? And if people wanted to just work on them, that was, I think, that was how I understood it. I don't know if anyone has had a chance to do work on them and has stuff to report. And if we want a new system.
Well, I started to try to pull together a list of all the action items that were in them. And the few I went through, you know, the action items were kind of vague. You know, you know, you know, you know, semi annual monitoring and walk the boundaries once a year and and stuff. So.
The template that Michael pulled together is a little more specific.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think that the next step would be to just try to take one of those and push it and rewrite it in accord with the template.
Yeah. Would you like me to tackle that for I could do Eagleville, it's as old as I am?
I'd be willing to attack Marrow because I've I've I read.
Yeah.
The management plan and we're there almost every day, so.
Yeah.
I definitely know what.
There will be new signage up there starting today and then again in October, the new park sign will be up.
The last mowing. The word must have finally.
Thank you.
Must have finally.
Yeah, so you want to know what it finally took for me to get that mowing? It's not where we are on the agenda, but I'll let you know. And the what was required for us to do this was myself, Will and Jay all went down there together. And we all stared at each section of grass and we said, how far are we going? And we snapped it off with a chalk line in some places. And the next time it was mowed, Will told the guy, if you go over that line, you're fired. And so they are not mowing wrong anymore.
The stuff is actually coming.
The chalk line need to be like reapplied in order for them.
Maybe I think they might have gotten the idea of just one mower width means just one mower width. So we're gonna see.
Maybe what should do is borrow the lining machine from.
From the field, yeah.
Actually, we went somewhere, I can't remember where we were. I think it was somewhere in New Hampshire that we stopped. And they actually had little posty signs, do not mow beyond this point. And there was like a million of them.
Yeah.
So they must have had the same basic problem, but they had, it looked like a commercial sign. It was just a little on a wire type thing.
Yeah, yeah. The wires are easy enough to make up.
Yeah.
No, because all you need is some electric fence wire.
I feel generally unfamiliar with basically all of these. But if you want to throw one at me, I can do it site.
Do you have one that you generally do walk? Because there's some that were, the batch that was done in 2017 is good, but that's small. There's a bunch of others that were done in 2011. I went with the oldest on here, but if you want to try one of the 2011 ones, I could do that. Do you have a park that you generally do go to?
Um, the only one that we frequent a lot right now is Schoolhouse Brook because it's accessible to the kids and us at the moment. We go to, yeah, Wolf Rock isn't ours, so Coney Rock, I've been going to Coney Rock sometimes to the kids.
Coney Rock is yours. Thank you for volunteering.
I will not volunteer for any, I'm facing some health issues this fall.
I see that Coney Rock has some that are Joshua's Trust management goals and some that are delineated as the towns. Do you want me to include all of them in the new template with the same parenthetical delineation?
I think the objective is to have a, for that one, the objective is using this template, which is presumably compatible with JT. We would wind up with a joint management plan with assigned responsibilities.
Yeah.
I guess I'm saying if I'm converting this all into a new template, do you want me to maintain the identification of the source of that management goal?
I I would think so.
Okay.
Because that's a.
And then.
Turn on, turn on the open space layer.
Just share this real quick. Except I'm not because apparently shares the first thing to go away. So, yeah, so.
I just wanted the 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 combination of the land ownership.
Yeah.
Are we gonna keep doorwork discreet in management?
We don't necessarily have to, doorwork is often kind of managed as joint with Lions Field.
Yeah, that's a current management plan.
Yeah, it might be, it might be easier just because Mulberry makes a convenient division.
Yeah, I think these two stay together and then Coney Rock stays separate. But so if you, if you do keep the JT ones as their parentheticals by source, when you have your first draft, I can go back in with JT to maybe see if they have updated this before and I'll actually, you know, I'll do that before you start work as opposed to doing it after and waste all of our time and effort.
But I'm basically just squeezing what we have here so that it makes sense in the new template.
I think so.
Okay, I can do that.
Thinking while we're working on that corner, we should, I should probably take, I should probably look at doorwark then. You know, that would give us that whole. I don't even know when doorwalk was done.
All the ones for, I think, when I gave you the last drive that included a large number of files that you got.
Yeah.
So.
Are there word versions of these documents that we can edit more easily?
Should be, yes, there are. I just upload everything as a PDF because they don't do well. First, people have Macs and that makes me awkward, but.
I don't have a Mac and I don't have Adobe.
Then I will provide word versions. There should be word versions.
Some versions of Word will convert a PDF.
Some, well, it can get pretty messy, but I just figured if you did have any source ones, then I would.
Yeah, we've got two, two.
Yeah, I'll send them out.
Yeah.
And I've never quite been able to get the right stuff into the library office to do it.
So shit, I know that when I skimmed over the Mero Meadow thing, it was extremely vague as to, it just said a mowing plan or something, shall I try to boost that up a little and make suggestions as to when?
I think you should, since this commission is a, or sorry, committee, I keep giving you more powers, you pointed out several times, Jim. Um, you guys are empowered to lead the way on managing these things, I think.
Yeah, okay.
Use your knowledge and expertise.
Because I actually have a couple of things that I would put in there.
Yeah.
As far as ideas that we wanted to try because we had said mowing the whole thing every other year. And I'm thinking mow that half one year and then a mow that half the next year. Because that way you have, you still have some standing stock with seeds and stuff to keep the wildlife going in the area rather than.
Keep in mind how long it took to get across the whole idea of one, one, one width. Now put that in combination with alternating. I'm just saying.
It might be able to get away with every third year.
I don't think so, the rate, the the woody stuff is growing.
Yeah.
If there's a lot, it might even have to be brush hogged this year because there's a lot of, there's a lot of woody stock in there.
Those were one of the ones that we thought would need conversion.
Yeah.
You know, by very frequent mowing, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, I mean, we wouldn't want to, the the wildflower stuff is perfect the way it is, but we have to maintain it now, so that's going to be interesting. But there, the wood, woody stock comes in very quickly.
I've often wondered if it made more sense to mow stripes, but I haven't been able to find anybody that's done any, you know, any work on it.
Well, it has been pretty much since it was started, it's been every other year. And by the end of the second year.
You get the wood is up.
Yeah.
But instead of mowing left and right, you know, eight foot or two mower strips and then move over.
I can only, I can only guess how that would go.
Or not.
Be simple. Yeah.
Yeah, we're not dealing with with Olympic level mowers.
No.
We gotta, let's keep our mouth shut.
But by doing what we had asked originally with them just mowing the one whip, the stuff is coming up in the the area that they had been mowing like gangbusters. The, the Joe Pie weed is like, you know, yay high, but it's blooming like crazy. It says, it's gonna get it done before fall kills it.
Yeah, yeah. I, on Coney Rock, I do have a two thousand five dot doc.
That's what I'm seeing up here. Oh, you have the dot, you have the dot doc first?
Yeah.
Okay, I would like that.
I will, I will send the dot docs of Marrow, Eagleville, Coney and Doorwork out.
And the template.
Yep.
Did someone say they would do Eagleville?
I said I would do Eagleville if Will, if you want to do Eagleville, you can take it.
I'll give it a stab, I'm not sure how much we're gonna be around in the fall, but I'll say that I'll try.
Sure.
I also had a few picky comments on what appeared to be the the template.
Sure.
Um, I wasn't understanding the difference between semi annual and biannual.
Semi annual meaning twice a year versus biannual is every two years.
That's biennial with an E.
Oh.
So basically it said twice, twice a year and twice a year.
Say the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but biannual is, is one of those.
Times a year.
It's one, one of those confusing.
I can't speak English.
Terms, you know.
I only know this because the Connecticut Invasive Plant Working Group has a biennial symposium every two years.
Cool, I will fix that.
There also the P O C D two point three, there, there's the use of the word eradication in regard to invasive plants. And I think you want management because in some cases eradication is not a reasonable approach.
I would agree with you. I want you to take that exact idea. I want you to put a pin in it for our November meeting. When I hand you all the P O C D goals for the 2025 relaunch. And if there's things that like that, that I agree are not necessarily feasible for certain plants, we should fix it in the P O C D as well. Because all this land came exactly from that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there's the thing about parks should support research. But it also occurred to me that prior to undertaking research in town land, maybe the university students should approach the town about what they're going to do.
So we do actually have a permit process. So there's a permit that you fill out online for doing research or collecting on town land that comes to my office. And Jennifer, I'm actually working with Will Be Met right now from the Conservation Commission on, he's gonna be intending to do some soil coring on water courses. And so he's just gonna be providing that to me right before his students get started. If the, this body would like to review those, then I can definitely send them around via email and see if that anybody has any concerns. We can put it on the agenda, I can hand it just to Jim, which generally we do have the power to just have a committee chair check such that business that is small, it'll just be handled by my office. But we haven't done a lot of it in the past couple of years because it was COVID, so that was a thing.
The, the, the other thing is, I don't know in your permit form, there's a requirement, they provide the results of their research of the town and we can decide whether we want it archived at some place or.
Yeah, I think one that we, that somebody did at Marrow many moons ago did come in and get put into the file.
Yeah, 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 there's, that's what I mean, you know, there's some, you know.
I think one of the things we're gonna find is as we try to use this template, there are some things that need tweaking.
Oh, yeah.
Not necessarily in template, but in how we use it. For instance, there's a column for frequency. And some of them are one and done kind of things.
Right.
That by now may be done.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, for a lot of these, you know, with regards to reblazing, I just reblazed everything with at all the overwhelming majority of our parks, locating, walking and marking the boundaries. I don't know how often it has to be done. We don't need a survey that often, even though we only need a survey once hypothetically, we update and acquire a joining property. Then we'd need to get a new survey and we want that done as well. So this is very much a living document. You can rip this apart and put it back together any way you want. I won't be offended, this was my best bet. So whatever works for management.
It's just, it's just something, as, as, especially as we don't work with new properties. But we deal with properties that have a long history. We have to think about how we're gonna.
Yeah, yeah, the.
Execute it.
Yeah. Well, well, you know, that's, the, the, the action item is walk and remark trails with blazes and signs. That's a case of as, as we walk them, of be, be willing to put up a blaze. If there seems to be a spot where they're missing. And this, walking the boundaries annually is probably a good idea on many of our properties.
Especially with the butters and the potential for.
Yeah.
Well, I'll give you an example, my, my neighbor tends to haul his yard trash across Curlyville Road and dump it on Mr. Muskowitz's property.
Nice.
Yeah.
When he doesn't dump it on, over the line on my property.
The table has Times New Roman and Calibri fonts with them, I would guess anyways, mixed. And you might want to maybe make it consistent.
Yeah.
Make it consistent before we go filling it out and have a dozen of them, because one day you might want it consistent and then you'd have.
Maybe it's an art form and I'm trying.
Maybe it is, I mean, maybe you don't care, that's fine too, I'm not.
No, I will make the ones consistent, I didn't even realize, I will fix that.
Yeah.
I think that's a legacy of my original draft because some of this stuff was cut out of the P O C D.
It happens really easily.
Yeah, yeah.
How much drift in this language is gonna happen when we adopt a new P O C D?
So I'll just jump right into the concept of what's likely to happen at the next meeting is, that's really up to you. That's report from staff, but that's really up to you. Um, what my plan is to have for you next meeting, as we will have an action item. Our tech, formally, our 2025 P O C D review begins in October. We have a launch event on the 28th of September. And so at your following meeting of that, you will be reviewing all of the items of the P O C D that are pertinent to your purview. I'm going to send these to you ahead of time. I'm going to say, this is what is generally under your jurisdiction, these are the goals, strategies and actions. Do you think any of these need to be changed? Have these worked out? Is there insufficient? Should we consider adding new goals, strategies or actions? This language is all malleable for the 2025 P O C D. It could change. We don't know that it necessarily needs to change a lot at the goals level in particular. But if there are particular actions that we want to pursue more vigorously or stuff that we've tried and just couldn't get off the ground, it would be wise to revise those goals. So, and we're turning directly to you on it because you're the people who wind up endorsing and making those goals happen.
Yeah. Yeah. Basically, our charge from the town council, let's just stick our nose into any part of P O C D.
You can stick your nose into the housing section, you can stick your nose into any of the section two and threes, which is open spaces and agriculture and natural systems. You can even stick your nose into economic development.
Yeah, when we wrote our, our charge for the town council to tell us, we included anything that affects natural resources.
Which turns out to be a lot of things, one might find.
Basically, everything.
Yeah, so what I'm originally, I'm gonna try speaking English again there. I am originally intending to give you sections two and three in particular, which contains most of your pertinent information. I can also provide you pertinent sections of section eight on housing. The fact that that is section eight is amusing to me. The housing section, particularly because you have open space dedications, which are important, and any advice that you may want to provide on that. So. Staff report, intermittent, interesting discussion, because.
Yeah. Okay, so.
So the other thought I had was, a lot of these, these actions are generically the kind of actions that the P O C D would goal would be met by. But on any individual property, we're gonna have to modify the language in that actions column.
Yeah.
And the one thing I noticed, especially on all of the older plans, a good practice is when you have an action item, you have somebody who owns it and a date when it needs to be completed by.
Yeah.
And we don't really have a, we, we don't have a mechanism for that. And the other thing is, if it's all town staff will do it, well, I guess it's gonna be very busy.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not busy now.
Well, we've talked of setting up some kind of monitoring spreadsheet or or access table or something that keeps bringing up by date as opposed to property, what has to be done.
Yeah, and if it's a standardized framework, that can be done. Now, the, the other thing is, is I think the idea of immediate, short term, long term is perhaps good enough because then we can prioritize between properties.
Yeah. But I'm thinking at least the monitoring, we have to be more proactive about.
Yeah, we have to, we have to have that annual. Hit that.
Few changes to make before I send that out. That's very workable.
The values in here at this point are examples of things that might fall in?
Everything is examples.
Okay.
Yep, so, so everything is examples, this was my best guess based on people's feedback on, on what's likely to be things we'll need to think about. And everything I could scrape, but we can definitely have other stuff. And ultimately, not every property will have every one of these P O C D goals, right? Some of them just aren't pertinent, we just cut those out when it comes time, because they may not all support it.
Is it better to have them just cut out or just check a does not apply to indicate that you thought about it?
That's a good question.
Yeah.
Do you want us to delete stuff from this if it doesn't apply?
I think.
It's gonna get off, it's gonna be awfully long if we are just adding things to it and checking things off as does not apply as opposed to leaving everything irrelevant in there.
Delete the action, but just the goals don't take that much space.
No, of course.
So as long as, if it doesn't apply, that's what goes in the action.
I think that makes sense.
Okay, understood.
To change, to change the action to.
Letters and bullets, by the way.
Yeah. Yeah.
I, I can see how that would be maddening, yes.
Somebody's used to working with graduate students putting together thesis is like that.
Right there, that's the.
Yeah, that's right.
And lower.
Yeah.
That's really good.
I was, I was thinking, it's, it's, it's just, if we, we decide to change the action item to not applicable at this time, you know.
Yeah, of course.
That works.
They get updated every five years anyway.
My daughter would say, that's irrelevant.
You may put it as irrelevant at the.
I did like, as I read the, the other management plans, I did like having a couple of paragraphs of, of text in the front to put it in context.
Yeah. I think a brief history of a couple of paragraphs to talk about what's going on is reasonable, we just, we don't need the whole thesis of stuff that some of the forty two page ones wind up having.
The other thing I, I think we might want to add a section, I'm not sure where. As we look at these things, do we want to evaluate the future potential for ADA accessibility?
I guess I have a question about that in terms of whether or not it puts town in a hard position if we are labeling too many of them as not having that potential. And that might mean that we end up undervaluing these resources or having the town labeled as not having enough accessible areas.
I wonder if that's a separate list of, of places. And I don't know how to phrase it, places to consider for accessibility, construction.
I mean, I would love to see it there, I think it's a good idea, but I do wonder if it might be used wrongly.
So I'm, I don't have an answer for you that tonight. My guess is probably not, but what I can do, over the past month, assistant town engineer Derek Delai and myself and Jay O'Keefe and Will Gresh have met multiple times to discuss from both the Parks and Rec and the plant engineering side, how we're gonna execute on projects for improved ADA accessibility at a couple of different locations, starting with Maramo and Southeast Park. Because those are places where it's relatively easy to accomplish. And we have a shortlist of ten locations and certain projects that we think can happen. So I will get that and bring it to you all next time in part to coordinate with this. I don't think that listing them as, if we listed as likely not ADA accessible and then say natural topography, you know, inefficient, lack of facilities that can be upgraded, things like that. I don't think that puts us in a bind. But it's a fair thing to.
Another option is to comment on it when it's in the positive under one of the categories that's here. And then you don't have a negative label on there. So we find one of the categories here where we think Mansfield Public Safety, I don't know, we find one of the categories where it fits. And we say, comment on.
Yeah.
Please comment if property has the potential to, you know.
Yeah.
And you make, you only do it if it is.
Yeah, because, or, or, and, and he's.
Probably Coney Rock.
Like the ten he just listed, those are the ones we would put something on, the ten he just said he has a list of. The rest, we just not say anything.
Yeah, that's probably, that's probably the best approach to take.
And it would actually fit under perhaps three point three.
Identify park and rec means.
Develop a safe trails network.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, okay, so if we just add in your points there, something saying could comment on potential if applicable. ADA potential if applicable. ADA potential if applicable. Something that leaves it as not a requirement.
Good idea. Could use to frame it positive as opposed to negative.
Yeah.
Yeah, and in good old bumpy Mansfield, how many places can we make, make it accessible?
The other thing is by having something positive there. But when, when we go to apply for a grant, we can say, somebody can say fifteen years ago, we were we were considering this, you know, give us money because it's.
It's long overdue.
Yeah.
Do you have any other thoughts on the management plan templates? So who's gonna tackle what?
Hey, okay, I think I've got Doorwater Lions.
Yep, so Doorworth was you, Coney Rock was Miranda, Charlotte was gonna take Eagleville, Sue will do Maro Meadow. I will update the template with the stuff that we discussed here. I will send everybody out the Word docs in the most recent form.
Thank you, places.
Absolutely.
Before we leave management plans, we need to talk about permanent preservation.
Yeah.
Yes, we do. Thank you, Vicky.
Thank you.
Okay, I, there was information in the packet about how we got to this point. And we were going, there were two thoughts. Back in two thousand and eighteen. We were going to do a management plan that needed to be updated. At that time, it was, we had selected common fields. Partly because it is one of the more vulnerable properties to proposed development. Which of course recently came true because they were thinking of having a fire station on common fields. So, that is something that I think needs to be considered as part of the updating of any management plan. That need, where the property is not permanently preserved. Of the ones that we're talking about tonight. The two that do not have permanent preservation are Eagleville Preserve and Maro Meadow. So, in drafting it, I think that needs to be part of the plan. But I also think we need to decide what we're going to do, and perhaps Michael could draft something for us to consider at the next meeting. In terms of how we would be approaching this, making a recommendation to the council. And we could have a pilot with one of these two properties. When we give the management plan to the council for approval.
And within the framework of goals, it's the very first of the property-specific management goals is a place to put whatever language we work towards. Because the goal is permanently protect important natural resources from development.
Right, but when those two management plans are submitted to the council for approval. There is going to have to be a decision about how to make that happen and have it be part of the process of approval. This is what we had decided to do. So if they're approving Maro Meadow, for example, along with their approval of the plan and its preference for permanent preservation, there also would be approval of a process for protection of that property. Either by getting a conservation easement that is managed by someone else, which is one option. Or placing a deed in the town records designating this property as dedicated open space.
In theory, who would third party be for the conservation easement?
Well, in theory, it could be Joshua's Trust. Depending on what the property is, it could be some other entity, Connecticut Forest and Park, for example.
Holds the one for Moss Sanctuary. So, the.
I mean, how does that work? I just don't understand.
How it works, by the way, C F P A does it, is that they have people who will go out yearly and will walk the properties that they have an easement on with easement terms, see if anything doesn't apply. And much like we do with our conservation easements, then their staff notify the, those who hold of discrepancies.
What do they get out of this? Because it just sounds like extra work on their part to, to police our, police an easement.
We give them money. So if they likely the way this would work is that we would enter into terms with one of those entities of we will pay you a lump sum out of the open space fund. You will become the guarantor of the conservation easement. We both get a permanent protection. So. Costs us money, but does succeed in permanently protecting.
And I think whatever we decide for an individual parcel would be the action right in this part of the management plan. And then it has to be adopted explicitly by the town council in conjunction with approving the management plan.
It seems like the properties at greater threat are the, for some kind of development should be the prime ones listed for getting the conservation easement if there was gonna be a small pot of money directed in that direction.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
As opposed to the ones that no one's gonna develop anyways.
Well, the one risk is, is that there may be pushback from the town council on taking flexibility on ability to put something on this land away.
Don't ask, you don't get an answer.
That is the point, Ken. We're talking about a town council ten, fifty years from now.
Yeah. I was, I have a document that I pulled from the Connecticut League of Conservation Commissions, or whatever they call themselves. A land trust. That cites several state statutes.
That, that would be if the town initiated a deed stating that this was permanently protected open space. And there is a state law that now allows towns to do that. So it is legally okay to do that. But the town is essentially in charge. And some future town council could decide to overturn that. Which is what happened on the state level back in two thousand and eleven. So, I, I, I'm thinking maybe we have a what do I wanna say? We have a menu of choices. It doesn't have to be all one way or all another way. So, for example, if it's something like common fields, I think it would make a whole lot of sense to have somebody holding a conservation easement, because that is a very tempting piece of property for development. Something like our part of Coney Rock. Probably there could simply be a conservation deed that the town interacts on itself because of the low potential for development. So I don't know. I mean, that's, that's my thought. We can sort of choose whatever fits the character of the property. And that way we decide what we wanna spend money on for monitoring. I assume we wanna spend money monitoring common fields, partly because it is so vulnerable.
But Coney Rock was not listed as one of the ones that wasn't unprotected.
Oh, no, but I'm just using that as a topography, that's an example.
There, there's, there's one. There is one thing to keep in mind that let's see, nineteen environment included land developed through grant. If grant money was spent to do anything on the property, it's also covered.
So the, the question in that case is, can we get grants to do improvements on existing parcels that were never protected? That would help us do that, or purchase surrounding open space, expanding them and cover the whole area. The other final thing, which is the thing that is really the best for us in all possible ways, but there is almost never money for, is to have someone else buy the development rights off of us. My, my, I, I, and that's the funny thing, right? That's, it never happens. But when you can get it to happen, it's huge. Sometimes the Fed opens up its wallet and provides grants to buy development rights off of towns to permanently protect lands. If it is for certain times, it's for critical soil and water conservation. Sometimes there's money for ag land, permanent preservation.
Can come and develop it?
No, well, they, the state could, but the holder is the D E P. So, like, the D E P or the Farm Bureau buys the development rights for a piece of farmland. And then that piece of farmland stays in farmland. And that's all it does, because they have an interest with this program of keeping farms farm.
Unless the government changes and decides to monetize those development rights.
Yes, but let, let me put it this way. The day that the federal government stops trying to appease farmers, there are no rules.
Kind of protect open space though.
Best thing, though, for something like common fields. Common fields is only kind of open space. It is open space, but it is also a farm. We lease that farm. So, it, that is the kind of place where you could presumably get that, to keep it as a working field.
But there's also the part of common fields that fronts on one ninety-five. Which is, you know, a prime candidate for something else of the, you know, it's not, it's not even hay now.
Yep.
You know.
Now, to me, it is going to start being hate again. This year was a changeover because they were previously doing alfalfa in that field. And so they killed all the alfalfa and then just started the soil regeneration this year. But.
Yeah. Alfalfa is water intensive.
Yeah.
Compared to hay.
Just why, just makes so much sense that it's grown in such large quantities in places like Arizona. Anyway. That weird soapbox aside. No, there are definitely places where we can do this. I think, what I can do, Vicky, is I can approach J T about common fields. And just see what it would cost, find out.
Maybe. You might want to approach Connecticut Farmland Trust. I don't know if they're doing easements to monitor. I'm not sure they do it. But it, it basically is farmland, it's prime farmland, so they might be interested.
Yeah, the, the, the other, the other thing, if if we can transfer some money, because if J T showed, if we can transfer some money over to J T to protect easements. When they show up and say, you know, you know, you're infringing on an easement. And so the per, and then the, the other lawyer discovers that J T has fifty million dollars in their protection fund or some hypothetical number, you know.
Right, yeah. Okay, so, so where, where are we going from here with this?
Uh, uh, well. I think Michael was gonna touch base with J T. He's got three or four things to talk about with Michael Hearn. And I will take, and I have a copy of it, but I'll see if I can send Michael a link to exactly find this document, statues permanently preserving town land on the C L C C website to share with people.
And I, I wonder whether, uh, J T, because they have certain requirements for uh, defense funds for each individual parcel. I wonder if there's any flexibility if it's not a private owner. But a, a presumably like-minded conservation organization trying to just sew up any possible loose end. Whether, whether they have some flexibility to maybe just adopt a blanket approach for when it's the town is the landowner.
And the other organization to kind of keep in mind is for Simpson Wood, et cetera. Is Wolf Den and or N R C S.
Right. Yeah. It's forest land, yeah. That's true.
More generally, Vicky was saying that this is something we should be including in the template. So maybe having a place where we're going to do that once again and knowing which properties are unprotected when we start doing those plans so that we do comment on that would be good.
So, is a yes, so strategy B, goal three point one, valued protection status recommended for implementation of appropriate legal protection parcel.
Right, and so Eagleville was one of the ones that she mentioned that they commented on.
So, Maro isn't permanently protected, Eagleville isn't.
Is not. Is not.
That's what he said.
Okay.
Eagleville, wasn't some of that grant money, Vicky?
No.
No.
Grant money.
And Maro, Maro was a gift, so it depends on what Maro family.
Right. The ones we're talking about now is just Maro and Eagleville. And then there are others that we're not talking about tonight, like common fields.
Yeah.
If you want, I can share, I can create a list of the properties that do not have grants. Would that be helpful?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because like Spring, uh, Spring Hill Fields, I know is in that category.
Right. Okay.
And that's, that's, that's one that, because it's familiar to the middle school. You know. I'm not sure how we go about that.
I don't know either, but I, I'm thinking if we have these two, three tools. As we prepare a management plan to send to the council, we can decide which of the tools we would recommend.
Yeah.
And include in the approval motion or whatever that the council is going to. I mean, in other words, we're not gonna recommend permanent preservation to the council and not have something for them to act on with their approval of the management plan. They need to happen at the same time.
Yeah.
I just, it's cleaner, it gets it done, et cetera.
Some of these properties, and I, I, I was just thinking I may would have to check carefully on Spring Hill, because when it's discussing the school site, the elementary school siding with Jennifer and Formal. She pointed out that many of the lands was restricted because we had accepted grant money for improvements.
Correct, yeah, most of Schoolhouse Brook Park was acquired with grants.
No, if, if you, if you accept money for an improvement state, it also becomes protected.
Right.
So would that be the case that Maro, because it was a grant, I think that they used to put the trails, the.
I think it may, it may well be.
Should look in the original.
Okay.
Well, there's nothing that says we can't.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Michael, if you're looking for the information on the Maro Meadow grant, uh, go to the Maro Meadow file in the town clerk's office. Because I think there is information in that file
Yeah.
about, about the grant.
Yeah, that's consistent with my memory.
Yeah.
Would it be appropriate to, in this, in the template, have brief language about the various options? To help jog our minds?
Yeah.
Maybe. Okay, now, while we're talking about this, Michael had brought up the water company wanting either to own or have some permanent protection for Porter Meadow, which is adjacent to their property. And I'm thinking this, this is now, as far as I'm concerned, thrown in with the management plan discussion of permanent preservation. Which way to go? I don't know, Michael, if you have talked to them, if they want to hold a conservation easement on it.
Next week.
Yeah.
So, as tends to happen, it took us four months to actually get together. But I have a meeting with them next week where we are supposed to discuss what they are interested in. I know that, at least in part, they are very, very interested in that parcel because it is the only place they could grow their plants.
Particularly protected.
But I don't know what they want yet. I don't know if they want to keep it all permanently protected. I don't know if they want to be able to put in a small access road so they could access further north and leave the rest protected. I don't know if they don't want to protect any of it. I imagine that all those things would get very different responses. So I just need to hear what they are finally thinking. My discussions with the folks at the water plant were generally with someone who was relatively low level. Um, he and I got to talking about these items while he came in to look at our files one day and we kept running into each other at events. I eventually met his direct supervisor and we exchanged the idea that we should talk about this and that's about as far as it got. So I don't know what they're ultimately thinking. I don't know what the higher ups who are making policy are thinking. As soon as I know, I will report back to you.
Okay, uh, Michael, I want to send you to the Porter Meadow file. Okay, because I'm just remembering that, you know, this was a family situation. And they insisted that that area be named the Nellie Porter Meadow or whatever. So so there are some little hooks here in from that transaction. And you might have went check back. They did not, certainly did not ask for permanent preservation. Um, but I think they wanted it known, the his, the historical connection for that property. Um, so in talking with the water company, I think that needs to be part of the conversation.
Then one of the justifications for purchasing it was shed of the lake. Which would be very different if there's a water treatment plant there.
Yeah.
That's true.
The birders would all be very unhappy.
Yeah, um, I mean, my preference is that the town keep it and um put a conservation easement on it in. One of the ways that we've been discussing it.
So. I'll come back with info about portable.
Yeah, cause they're real close to that property line, very much so, yeah.
Right, and also on that, on the south side. There's sort of like a a little, a small pine slope. Um, which probably won't show up very well, but between the pine slope and the meadow is a wetland.
Yep.
So, you know, I don't know what, what if they're thinking of simply using some of that's a little, the sliver of slope. That's available right along the property line or not. No, it's it's not just wet along the road. It is wet between the slope and the rest of the meadow.
Yeah.
Cause I I I remember going in there and and working on it and it wasn't wet.
I remember deciding to take a different route through.
Yeah, right. Exactly. So I would, I would think they would be pretty restricted in what part of that property they could use.
Probably, particularly because I don't generally let people fill wetland anymore and I.
Exactly.
I uh, it's one of those real baseline things I try to not do with my job when I wake up in the morning. Don't fill wetlands, don't crash the car on the way to work.
Um, and also, I mean, that wetland does have a function because there is runoff from one ninety five. Some of it is caught in the retention basin right next to one ninety five. But clearly there is more water going down there and getting caught in that wetland.
Right, based on our change in in uh expected rainfalls like.
Yes.
Always figure what happens if the retention base or when the attention basin overflows.
Yes, fills up and overflows, yeah.
So then the wetland becomes a buffer for possibly polluted runoff entering the reservoir.
Right, exactly.
Which is, um, yeah, that that runoff would only be a few feet from their intake.
Yep.
Right.
So well, probably not as bad as the goose pool.
So I would, I would say it is in their interest to keep this intact. Because of the natural functions of the property.
So you're saying I should threaten them that will develop it so they put a conservation easement?
No, we just very nicely say thank you for your interest, but we're going to keep it. But I do think we should put a conservation easement on it. I think that would help. I think that would help them be more confident.
You know, and uh, you know. Cause they actually declined to get involved in this.
Well, I remember.
There's another section that's undeveloped that was on the market on their reservoir.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Right on the road.
But farther up.
All land in the back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Zoom up a little bit, Michael.
It's one of these.
Go, go north. No, it's the one. It's the one, no, you're too far.
Okay.
That one, the comma shaped one.
Yeah.
The one that, it's the one that's shaped like New Jersey.
Yeah, well, I think he's got it highlighted there, yeah.
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 Yep, that was offered to the town at one time. Um, but we felt there was enough wetland between the dry land along one ninety five and the river. That um, there really wasn't much anybody could do with it in terms of development.
Yep.
It was pretty wet down there. I remember sloshing around down there.
Yep, yeah.
Yeah, never bodes well when the wetlands finger appears on the map to be right through someone's house. These aren't, these aren't that accurate, but it's always.
It's definitely not good.
Definitely not. Anyway, I think Vicky wrote up some really good stuff about permanent protection and how as we go through these, we should consider those. I'll do some investigation of a couple of things for the next month or so and come back to you with information.
Okay. Thank you, Michael, for your help with that.
So, what I'm here for.
Yeah.
New business with chair.
Okay, um, okay. Highland, Highland Road, um, I had presented this um. As a draft in, I don't know, I think it was May actually. And we decided to look at it again in September. And one, do we wanna get together and market? And two, do we wanna invite the um, the community? And the other thing is when?
Well, the weather's beautiful of late. Gonna ruin that.
So if you schedule this, you bring a hurricane.
It's been almost a decade since we had a really bad one up here, so. And I, I hear the Atlantic Basin is quiet this year, so if there's gonna be a year to do it, might as well be this one.
This, the, the, there's, there's one storm that's gonna pop up in the next couple of days, but no. But it's a, it's close to Africa right now. But enough to remind me to test my gen set. So. So what's the the feeling on uh, you know? We can do it as a community event or we can, you know, a couple of us can just do it as a, as a. You know, on an informal, the way we've done many other trails. My personal thought is if we can get neighborhood buy-in. It would be um. You know. It would become an asset to them, like we've done between Monticello and Fellon Road.
Jim, are you thinking, you know, there's sort of a way to make a circle and then there's a way to make a half circle? Are you thinking of the full circle?
I, I think we have to do the half circle because otherwise would be, you know. Basically changing people's backyards.
Yeah.
Um, and then at some point, you know, I think what was the phrasing um I used. You know, reworking and marking the path on the east side of Highland Road from Stone Ridge Drive. Three marking of the rest of the loop trail west of Highland Drive requires strong neighborhood support.
Translation, it's really bad.
With a fifty foot strip across, across the back of many people's lots.
Right.
And the houses are close to that fifty foot strip on that side of Highland.
That's not how you spell Highland at all.
Um. Let's see, use parcel three thirty one dot eighty eight dot five seven. Okay.
Oh, here it is.
Yeah, okay, you got it there. See, yeah. Yeah.
That's close to a lot of people.
Yeah.
Nicely in the middle of the woods.
Yeah.
Would it be a good idea to put a few blazes out before the public trail marking?
I th- I thought to slip by and rag it in, you know, put some flagging up. And the other thing my thought is we would need a couple of metal posts. And signboards in the uh pipeline uh right away. Or the high line right away through there. Cause that. The um southern section, well, you can see the red dotted line for the.
This is the gas line.
Okay, now I thought, I, I thought I remembered that as a high tension line.
I think you're right.
Yeah.
It's high tension. That's much better to put a metal post in the ground than a high tension line, not a high pressure gas line.
Fair.
I agree.
I was gonna have you drive the post. Well, I stayed home.
Yeah.
Actually had a situation in Wyoming where somebody actually put a, put a well into a oil pipeline.
Ooh.
In an oil well.
Ooh.
They struck oil.
So back to the driller, yeah. So how do we wanna proceed on this?
I think inviting the neighborhood is a, is a good thing, but uh it also needs to. Be an adventure that is at a pace that they can accommodate, which means uh a pre-marking.
Yeah.
So more or less it's a, we think this is where the trail would go. Let's walk it together and see if you have any ideas that would help make it better.
Yeah.
As nice as the weather is looking right now, one thought is that it's gonna get cold.
Yeah. Yeah. So I'm thinking the next, well, so what do we wanna choose for a date? Cause we, cause we can probably slip out next week and and get some rag, get some plastic. Flagging up. I still think of that as ragging in a trail because that's what, that's what Harold Pierpont taught me when I used the term when I was in high school.
They probably used rags.
Yeah, well, you did. Because they would, they would degenerate.
Yeah.
Um, you know, so you didn't have to, and that's one of the reasons I, I, if I know it's not gonna rain, I'll use crepe paper.
Oh, yeah, that's perfect.
Yeah.
That will definitely degenerate.
Yeah, and you can get it, you can get orange crepe paper cheap on about November second.
Yeah.
Um, if, if everyone, i- if it works for people, you can do the weekend of the twenty first. I'm just thinking, if you wanna, if you want me to send that, those letters on letterhead. And you don't wanna go out and do it two days from now and just show up at people's door, knocking on doors saying, hey, we're marking your trail. Um, then we, we'd need at least next week. If you don't wanna do that, we can go for this. I know you're busy on that day, cause that's the one day you can't come to the conservation.
It is.
Monitor.
Yeah. I have family in town. Um. Twenty eighth is, I believe, the um. I'm going to have a hundred people at my house on the twentieth.
Oh, cool.
That's the E E B farm dance.
Oh, nice.
So, you know, I, but I will be here this weekend. I just don't know what shape I'll be in. Um, in terms of trying to get out, but I mean, I'll be around.
I think October is better than the next week, cause you get into. You get into the first weekends in October, you're getting into the high holidays.
The fifth? The sixth? We don't have to do Saturdays. Sundays are also workable.
Yeah, Sunday afternoons.
Sundays are often better because kid obligations um that happen to happen on Saturdays.
Do the twenty second or the twenty ninth? Or.
Twenty second doesn't work for me if we're talking September.
Yep.
During the weeks and this.
Yeah, we're not, I'm not even suggesting during the week.
Um, the twenty sixth and the twenty seventh, I can't. I'm doing the town camera trap walk on the nineteenth.
Wow.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
Means that the only day we can take the family to the Renaissance Fair is the twentieth.
Okay, well, I'm going to the Renaissance Fair on the twenty eighth.
Oh. Twelve, the thirteenth are possible. October sixth is possible.
Wasn't the twelfth Columbus Day? Uh, uh, Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Probably.
Yes, it is.
October sixth.
I'm hearing no one muttering and I can't do October sixth, so.
I will not partake.
Yeah. Well, October, yeah.
Okay. You want, Jim, I can.
Yeah.
If you wanna pass final draft of that letter over to me.
Yeah.
Um, I'll put it on the letterhead and then send it off to everyone.
Well, the, the only difference I would do is if it's going out in letterhead instead of, you know. The town of Mantle, yada, yada, yada invites you, I would change it to we are inviting. You know, unless somebody spotted something that my fat fingers missed.
You ought to correct it after the period of violent road to capitalize the town.
Yeah.
We like revanchal capitalization for the town. In town we trust.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, yeah.
Um, it said there's a period there because you abbreviated road.
Yeah.
So obviously after a period comes a capital.
Exactly, I did, I didn't, I didn't catch change, yeah, sneaky.
Okay, yeah, great.
Okay, so.
Park rules.
That's as a P D F, but I'll send you the dot doc. Doc X.
Do we need a motion to send one to? I don't think we do, but.
I don't think we need a motion to send a letter and there doesn't seem to be contention, so it can be. Through bias sent.
Yeah. Yes.
And you fixed on the sixth.
Sixth, October sixth. Hey.
And what time, two o'clock?
Sure.
Keep in mind it'll be getting dark.
Yeah, that's, that's why that, that's why my voice went up at the end of that.
One o'clock.
Yeah.
That's still after lunch.
Yeah. Okay, so we have um park rules and the entry signs. You had a. So I think someplace in our packet, there was an example.
Yes, so the trail entry sign, uh, this is the sign that exists at Simpson Wood Preserve. Um, we actually have a pedestrian scale sign that describes what you should and should not do at the location. Uh, telling us what's prohibited and when the park is open. Um, we should put these everywhere. There should be at least one place in every park where it describes what is and is not allowed. Because I've got uh the communication in your packet as the next communication, as well as one I got today of people not following the. Because I've got uh, the communication in your packet as the next communication, as well as one I got today of people not following the park rules. Uh, probably because there are no posted park rules. I mean, probably because people are gonna disregard the park rules anyway, but. There are no posted park rules, so giving people the benefit of the doubt. Um, they may not have known.
Yeah, Doorwatt is also mentions no bike riding.
Yep.
Um. And. I did post. After discussing this with a bike rider, I did post one of the footpath signs. Um. But I think uh, JT is being much more explicit. Um, I often thought we just thought I have a big sign that says foot travel only.
Hmm, that would be fair in, I think, a lot of places. Um, what I, what I started to do when um, we started going, you know, we really need to replace all these um, was. I actually went out to, we have all of our park rules written down on our parks website. And they are a mess, but I condensed them down to these fundamental prohibited activities. After a quick discussion with our insurance on how bad would it be for us to not prohibit ice skating? To just not say anything about it at all. They said, no, you should say it's not allowed. Um, people should absolutely not ice skate and you should not give anyone the illusion that we've checked the ice for thickness.
Yeah, well, well, the, well, the other, the other thing is, how do we deal with swimming?
Right, so I don't think there's going to be. One universal set of park rules. That will work everywhere. I think we will need a couple of different signs. I think there are certain things that can be on every side.
Blowing leaves. My mother ran into people blowing leaves in Wolf Rock.
With a leaf blower?
Yes.
Yes.
Because they were clearing it, probably it wasn't on the trails, she thinks they were clearing it for bike.
Yeah, yeah.
I feel like the bike thing has gotten to be rather.
It's gotten out of hand.
So.
Michael, could you make your your file bigger? I can't read it here on my little computer.
Yeah, wow.
Uh. One that might not occur to you, but apparently is something people do.
Uh.
In trail parks.
Yeah.
Well, I know they rake the the long trail at Moss Track. Because they do um. Running, the running team does that trail.
Yeah, no, this is blowing leaves off the trail.
Yeah, yeah, but I say, I know they rake that one because we we. Walked it very soon after they raked it and you can see the rake marks.
Ac- actually, actually, Will, Will blew the um.
I would guess.
The new trail.
It would happen in ours.
That we put in. From Moss.
Pretty brazen.
From.
It's pretty loud.
Yeah.
So. So put, so play that hypothetic. The problem is the bike riding. Is the blowing of leaves?
Absolutely, an environmental problem, absolutely.
Because.
Of all the wildlife that uses leaves to nest in.
That you.
And the noise disruption in general to wildlife and the noise disruption to the people seeking nature recreation in that area.
Yeah.
So yes, but I would, I would definitely. Lean heavily on the fact that blowing leaves is not good for all of the insects and other things that are supposed to be in the leaf litter.
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And um.
I mean, they were blowing it, to be very clear, I think everybody gets this, they were not blowing the trail clean and blowing the leaves off the trail, they were making new trails.
Yeah.
By blowing leaves.
Yeah, so these, these rules should include something about. Trail construction, at least. You know.
Right, and co- um, constructing trails and um. Construction of. I can't have quite the rare, you know, uh, walkways. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to think of the right word, but you know, physical construction of physical objects.
Yeah.
Um, as well as.
If.
Creating trails.
Or injury to plants or animals, cutting of any vegetation. Is.
But it's litter is dead vegetation.
Yeah.
We get away. That would sweep by.
So, yeah.
It also needs to be more explicit than just vegetation because in Schoolhouse Brook, the bike trails have been channeled over. What appears to be um, things that Indians put together.
Yeah.
You know, with with the sacred landscapes. And that isn't, isn't gonna be covered by vegetation, but I think it just needs to be explicitly said, no trails, no new trails made.
Operating disguised equipment, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think the whole point is, is you can't be modifying the park. Uh, without authorization from the people who's parking.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, so, so, you know, because the bike people have also been digging and building dirt ramps and stuff.
Oh, yeah, this is, so.
All kind. Yeah, yeah. So I'm thinking about disturbing, so moving soil.
Yeah.
Soil or rock.
I mean. It would fit under destruction, destruction, misuse and defacement. But maybe we need to be be more, even more explicit than that.
Well, and what about.
Lightning bugs back.
What, what about something that said? Essentially says, stay on the trail idiot. Stay on the designated trail.
Yeah, designated, that's.
Stay on the designated trail idiot is an amusing thing to write on the formal park sign, I.
We could use the term Egypt. Uh, they got the Irish.
Uh, I. Um. Perhaps on these defective, no construction, creation of trails or modification of soil or earth conditions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, now the big thing for this, of course, is this long list of rules is great. Except that it is a long list of rules. Um. And. It is long, um, and that isn't necessarily great to just have a wall of text.
Of rules, visit this site using this QR code.
Yes, um, so that is.
Informed and are responsible.
Yes, so the QR code is the easiest way to do this, um, and so creating a a smaller selection of rules for the sign itself.
Yeah.
Opened onto dust, no fires. Um, yeah, no fires or other modification.
Foot travel only.
Foot travel only or full set of rules.
Yes.
Yeah, do not disturb vegetation, rocks or soil and no collecting.
I think that foot travel only should be no bikes dash foot travel only. Or no bikes and horses because I don't think. That bike people read very well. You know, they're moving too fast.
Yeah, they might read very well and just choose not to.
Yeah, well, the, well, well, the, well, the one thing is when you say no bikes. And somebody shows up with their electric motorcycle or their gas motorcycle. You know.
Yeah.
You know, you know, how do you define?
I think, I think foot travel only and then. Of course, somebody is gonna say, that's ADA exclusionary.
Well, i- i- in the full um, in the full, I was been thinking about that, in the full rule. The full articulation, something about the, you know. Um. You know, motorized handicap, if the noise is. Quiet enough that. People can carry on a conversation.
Horses are very quiet. Yeah, until they're not, but mostly they're required.
But I think, I think having the the key rules. On the sign and in a QR code is the way to go.
Yeah, if we post.
Probably golfing isn't really.
I think leaf blowing doesn't need to be written there, cause it might just give people ideas on the main side. But having it covered under the QR code is a good idea.
Yeah, I found out when golfing is on here, it is because people would drive golf balls into um, Bicentennial Pond.
Yeah.
Um, so this was, please stop doing that.
Yeah.
Um.
But I'd say, that's probably.
I, I.
Doesn't need to be on the main sign, I would agree.
If we post a QR code, we should put the URL underneath it.
Mm hmm.
Because there are many cases where people find the posted QR code. Put theirs on it, it has a redirect to the original site and stuff. Um, malicious.
Cool, I love that. Um, yes, so uh, yes, we can do that, that's easy. We have a, you know, Mansfield CT dot. Org slash parks do's don'ts. Um, I know that one off the top of my head and don't know why.
Makes sense.
I think, yeah, I think the bikes, foot travel only, the pets on leash, those are critical because they're often abused.
Right, yeah.
Kids.
Though I, I will say that. That um, hero.
It depends on where, it depends on where you are with them.
I don't think I've, in the years that we've been hiking now, I don't think I've ever seen more than two dogs up a, up a leash here.
Yeah.
The new bench, however, down by the, in the um, the fishing. Um.
Mm hmm.
Pad, the, the new spiffy bench, there is a couple that goes there. Every morning and every afternoon with their dog. And they sit for about an hour. They say hi to everybody that goes by and so does the dog. He's not leashed, but I've never seen a better behaved dog. He sits. Right next to the bench and he says hi to everybody when they go by. Um, but they're there every day, twice, twice a day.
That means we're getting a lot of bench use hours out of that.
That bench, that bench is.
Bench, I'll pass your phrase, I'm gonna pass so much praise on from you to Will, that mode right and people love the bench.
Yeah, both benches. But that one.
Do we need to like?
The other one they're gonna really like in the winter.
I just had him install more stuff for me today, so I'll just bring him some coffee.
Yeah, tell him the, the bench on the fishing pad is. It, it doesn't get a chance to get cool, cause there's a bottom on it all the time.
Well, it's good, all the times I've been down there, there's been someone using it, so.
Yeah.
Um.
So, next, so, so that brings.
I had a question on.
I, I, I have a question about the signs themselves.
Yep.
What is it with the uh, park change, the leaf to the parks and rec logo?
This is, no, this is not um, accurate, so this was the old one, this was a note made on this old thing when we were first mocking up this sign. Um, which is, this was pre me, this is a twenty twenty sign. Um, this has been out there at Simpson Woods since I think about then, cause it was acquired. Twenty eighteen?
Twenty eighteen.
Um, so this is, that was just an internal note, the leaf stays.
Yeah, cause I, I thought the whole point of, of branding the town was to not have disparate logos.
Right, the point. To have a brand, we should refrain from saying branding the town, because that sounds like with the hot.
Yeah, really.
Um.
But that's what you are doing.
I. That is what we are doing. That is what we, the collective royal we of the town are doing. Um, Vicki, you said you had another question.
Yes, um, you're, I, I'd like to ask about the actual sign, the physical sign. You met, you indicated the one at Simpson Woods, which is the park sign, it isn't just a. Park rules sign.
Yep.
I'm assuming this is going to be a separate sign in addition to the ones that we talked about before.
Yes, so those are actually. We are having the, all the peers for those are being um, poured. To, within the next two weeks, uh, they're supposed to, or at least to get started on the twenty third of September. Um, so the new park signs for all the parks and all the people who keep asking, where is my sign for Shelter Falls or where is my. Sanctuary, of which I have had five people in the past two weeks. Um, will come in and ask me that question, uh, will be satisfied and we will have those new signs and they are all particular scale, so they will clearly mark those. But the point is not to have these on those signs, we want these to be pedestrian scale, so instead of get out of your car. Walk up to whatever the trailhead is and you see the sign when you are.
And how large will the sign be?
We haven't decided yet.
Thirty-six inches?
Um, so if we were to get them in this same shape. Um, thirty-six inches wide is the um, wide point of the oval of this sign.
Yeah.
Uh, it's about. Twenty inches tall, twenty, twenty-four inches tall. Um. We can go smaller and go with a rectangle, which kind of optimizes space a little bit. Um. That. If we could probably squeeze a twenty-four by eighteen, if we were to go with a rectangle, just less lost space. Um, but if we're happy with roughly. This look, and if you haven't looked at it in the field, just drop up to Simpson Wood, it's very obvious once you park. Um, then we can just get these, I think this was made by Signs Plus and we can just get a whole bunch more made.
Okay.
I like round ones, they hurt less when you walk into them.
That's a good point.
Yeah, but, but the, but the other thing is being hit with a, with a rectangle or sign as you start into the park. It says, this is something you should look at too. You know.
So you don't walk into.
Yeah, but, but, but the oval is softer.
More nature friendly in terms of the.
I get the point, I do.
Yeah.
Uh, one thing to consider on the signage. Is on some parks. For instance, across the street from Simpson Wood.
Mm hmm.
There really needs to be an explicit sign saying. Don't go in the hay field.
Well, well, it's been torn down, the post is there, but not the.
We have a sign like. A private property that you and I put up, just a little medallion, one of those could be added at least.
Well, well, on the, well, see, see, that's not technically true on the athletic, on the eth- agricultural fields. You know? That they're, that they're not private.
Right, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that.
You need one that just says no access.
Yeah.
Um, okay.
I have a.
No, go ahead, go ahead, Charlotte.
I have a comment on this. Bicycle, I can't quite read it, bicycles, consumption of alcohol, blah, blah, blah. Then the last thing is prohibited, but I know at Doorwatt. I saw a similar sign and. Being attention deficit, I didn't read all the way through it, so I took it to mean it was okay to have bicycles. And I think that it should say no bicycles, blah, 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 consumption of alcohol. So that it's clear right off that this is what is prohibited, rather than invited.
I think that's a good point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The no at the beginning.
No bicycles, no, no consumption of alcohol. No fires. Actually, I could abbreviate that to no alcohol, no fires, no hunting.
You don't need all the no's, but just no, no colon, blah, blah, blah. Or you could put all the no's in, but it would take a lot of space.
Do the no, do no colon, don't just do no bicycles, comics, consumption of alcohol, because then the next one might.
Right, yeah.
To be without.
Okay. And no should be in capital letters.
And bright red.
Yeah, like the red. Flashing lights, yeah.
Yeah.
So can red, green, colorblind people see red?
You, oh, you can.
Like red on brown might not be seeable.
Yeah, so, so, yes, you can still see red, it's just that if you put red and green next to each other, it becomes very hard to have any distinction between them.
Yeah, yeah, the, the, the blue should be dark enough so you get good contrast.
Um.
Yeah, there, there are software you can put on your computer to pretend to, pretend you're colorblind of different types.
My wife does all of her figures in um, the yellow, blue um. Uh, fade, so that way, red, green, colorblind people can see, and of course, then we only inconvenience the blue, yellow, colorblind people, who are a much smaller percentage of the population.
No, I do. Uh, it seems to me this sign is large, it's three feet across.
Hmm.
I'm like. Why can't we just use that as a park sign? I mean, it's so big, I just. Somehow I think it's overkill, I understand you have a lot of language get up to get on it. But to me, it's.
It's gonna be that big when it's in the ground and you're walking past.
Yeah, see, see, the, the other thing is, there's so much on here, Vicki, that.
I know, that's the problem.
Not a driver visible sign.
And they're gonna be setback, so I do, I, I think really the. The best way to understand scale of this is just go out and look at it in person.
I did. I thought it was big.
If you think it's too big, we can scale it down. I have no horse in this race, we can make the riding whatever size that. It's gonna be.
Based on my students, I think they need it shoved in faces, I think you need it big.
Big to make the point.
Right.
Yeah.
And not, oh, I didn't see that sign.
I don't know what we'd be saving by have it, having it be in the amount smaller that we would make it smaller, I guess, like, I agree, it might be more aesthetic for that one view, but. Other than that, it's just. The sign is there, that's the impact in the first place.
Um, okay, I have a couple other questions. Um. We have parks with multiple entrances. Are these signs going to be at all of the entrances?
Probably. Um, I can. Compare it to how costly it is to get vehicular scale signs that have things like breakaways or need concrete piers, these are way cheaper. And we can install them and drive them ourselves, so um, you know, I can get a. And we can install them and drive them ourselves. So um you know, I can get a, I can get a sign that's a two by three. But which is roughly this with a pole for a hundred seventy from Signs Plus with all the hardware. So that's, that's nothing compared to how much we otherwise allocate for stuff.
Because Schoolhouse Brook, we would need one for each trail.
Many, many. And and I'm thinking maybe we should think that, think about it and make a list. Of the entrances. That should have a sign. Um I'm I'm thinking of. Dunham Forest, Dunham Town Forest, for example. Um where you need more, you need a sign in one, more than one place.
Yeah, well, the same thing on Schoolhouse Brook Park.
Right, yeah, that's, that's what I need. I, we need to.
Having a small rectangle or rules sign that was a generic. Sign that we could stick up on those um places.
Those smaller.
But but no, I mean, we're talking about the sign that we're looking at right now, the three foot sign.
Yeah, I fully realize that, Vicky, but I'm, what I'm, what I'm thinking out loud is. From a cost perspective and the number we need, we use the three foot like across from the. Schoolhouse Brook for, for an example, we use this side across from Clover Mill Parking Lot. And maybe down um where. The um Indian Trail or whatever comes out there, but then like where Clover Mill Trail. Stick crap leaves um Clover Mill Road, we just have a small square sign with rules on it.
We could do that.
I think that's a good point is, is have have one of these signs of this scale. At every trailhead that has parking.
Right.
In a place where when you get out of your car, it's visible. And then where there are other trailheads that intersect roads, maybe a smaller scale sign. Um because you're walking to get there.
Right, yeah. And it's also, you know. You know, sure, the signs aren't too expensive at circa two hundred, but we need a lot of them. So.
Yeah. Uh I want to go back to Clover Mill Road. I think a large sign would be in the parking lot because you have trails going. On the north side from the parking lot.
I think there we would.
And then on the south side, I think you need one of the smaller signs. Particularly because of the problems on the south side with bicycles.
I was thinking one of the larger signs on the other side too.
Two of them. Yep, yep. Well, I think that's, I I think that is a question that needs to be addressed and there needs to be a list. Of which type of signs are needed and where.
Yeah.
Since we're doing management plans, we could write down all the parks entrances.
Yeah.
And with our, there's more than one, and then that allows us to determine what our infrastructure need is at each park.
Yeah.
Um but when do you want to put these signs up?
Um. Eh this is something that we should do. This is not something. For which we are up against a grant deadline, is not something for which we are up against a buyer suddenly becoming. A seller suddenly becoming disengaged when it comes to an acquisition. It's not something that the state says have it done by twenty twenty five or you don't get funding anymore. So I think this is a good project for us to work towards at the same time as we are doing our um uh management plan updates. But. We we should do it, but they haven't been up for a while and. What wants isn't gonna kill anybody, we should just work towards it.
Yeah.
I'm thinking you might want to put one up on the south side of Clover Mill Road. Right now.
Well, yeah, well, that's our next item.
I know, I'm I'm just saying it now, but it.
Yeah.
We're leading into that discussion.
Yeah, and we, another thing is eh we can do. Do we split this cost across three years? We normally earmark a certain amount of money for this commission every year and we can spend it as. We have discretion and if we want to do ten of these signs a year. Then we could do ten of these signs a year, spend fifteen hundred bucks a year about. And then at the end of three years, we have all of them marked with rule signs and we go by highest priority to lowest priority, we could do that. Um so. Um. Yeah, if you.
Are you underestimating the number of sign?
Maybe, we've got. Probably twenty parks with. Trails. Some of them are also sports fields. And then if we assume that every park must have one rule sign, and then some of them will have two. And the rare one will have three or four, like Schoolhouse Brook, but probably in the neighborhood of thirty to thirty five trails. Rules signs is what I wager. So if we can pay between, if they cost a hundred seventy. Uh or around, we say they cost two hundred based on the rough dimensions here and those prices I got from Signs Plus two weeks ago. Then ten a year is two thousand dollars, twelve a year is twenty four hundred. When we have that much money to spend and not pauper the commission to do other things like send mailings. Um so, so I think normally commissions budget for five thousand dollars a year, normally we don't spend it, but. We could do that and then. We could get it done in a couple of years. Since Vicky segued us in so well to communication.
Yes, I I that's what I was gonna say is. I had to move towards uh, you know. Um. Mr. Laming's letter.
I I would like to give some background for this letter. Uh Scott was the chairman of the Parks Committee. In the eighties and into the very early nineties. Jim, you might remember this better than I do.
I I I abandoned him to join this committee.
Right, uh anyway, Scott, Scott um was quite involved with the Parks Committee. Not only physically with trails, but raising really important questions that helped lead us to. The whole open space acquisition process. I mean, he's a person who. Has invested heavily in the town's natural resources since the nineteen eighties, maybe the nineteen seventies. Then the issue of having bicycles in the parks came up. And a compromise was made that there would be one designated trail. And Schoolhouse Brook Park and all their parks would be closed to bikes.
Okay, the.
Scott resigned from the Parks Committee over this because he was so opposed to having even one designated trail.
And 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 the town council hearing on the regulation. It was standing room only because the bicycle people had brought so many people. I have no idea how many of them were actually town residents, but it really intimidated the town council.
You know, I got it mixed up before when I said my mom's. Witnessed it in Wolf Park. It was actually, we were walking Schoolhouse Brook. And that's where she said, oh, you see this, there was someone here who was blowing.
That's the photo, the photo.
The exact thing.
Yeah, we've actually came across people working with chainsaws on building trails.
Yeah.
Being walking alone, I was not going to confront somebody swinging a chainsaw.
No, probably a wise choice.
Having seen parts clips from Texas Chainsaw Massacre.
Yeah.
Right.
It can be very aggressive. I know when I ran the Nature Center in Bristol, the bike people were my.
Yeah.
Bane of my existence.
There are um. There are places in Schoolhouse Brook where they built logs and so. Now, here's the one tension I'm having. We have a group of people that are willing to turn out and work. On building trails and trail structures. Admittedly, they don't understand um erosion control. But um, you know. You know, we've, there, now, things like that, and I've come across logs that they have um flattened the top so they can ride on it. Yeah. You can see what, you know.
It's definitely chainsaw.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah.
But this um. And I think I know right where that is, you know, the. See the names where their log work there, yeah. So the question is really. What is, what do we want?
The camera trap.
Yeah.
Do it.
Um, yeah, um.
But you said your program deletes people's faces.
Uh that that's just probably a mouse click.
My, my cameras release face, but if I was to put it online, then it goes through a program that.
Yeah.
That deletes.
Um, does Scott give the the link to the website? There was a biking.
Yes, I looked at that, that's a little scary.
Yeah, it's very scary.
Some way that the town can hold that website responsible for. This.
Holding people responsible online?
I don't think so.
Well, well, one, one thought I had was. Um, you know, they're listing a lot of trails. That aren't authorized and so forth, and I don't know whether the town attorney could write them a letter.
I can try to get that taken down and say as. As agent for the property owner, this is not an authorized trail. We don't want people on our property doing that. I can just do that. Because I'm your agent and this is within your purview. Um. The biggest thing I wanted to talk.
I want to make sure you discuss that with Jennifer and the town.
I wouldn't tell Jennifer rather than just sending threatening letters. I do that on my. Not, not for town property, no. Um my, my biggest question is, what do you want me to do here? Because I can. The the most extreme steps I can take is I can try to get this thing taken down. I can go out into the woods with Will and some of the other guys. And we can bring our axes and our shovels and we can destroy these trails and all the jumps and we can just break everything up.
That's what Joshua's Trust has done on a couple places, but but this has been going on for probably.
Over the other options.
A decade.
Short of that, um of destroying all these trails. I think that there needs to. We, we can. Try to.
Educate?
I would like that education works. We can up signs. That immediately rounded that say like, this is not an authorized trail. Using this is violating certain rules. You can't be fined and ticketed. Um.
The unfortunate thing, we do that, we have to at least enforce it once.
Uh more than once.
We, that, the problem is catching people. The same problem that happens with ATVs everywhere in the state. It's people messing around in the woods. It's very hard to do that. The town does not have, I don't have enough spare hours when I'm here to go sit in the woods and just wait for people to do it.
Using these at night too.
And on the weekends, so. There is very, it's very, very difficult.
If you observe this, who do you call?
Yeah, because I'm sure that this, that the uh. The resident trooper, the resident trooper's office is is so spread so thin that they would not, they would look at it very minor.
No, I don't think the police would respond to this. Uh.
It's a matter of resource concert, concert, you know, control.
I, I mean, I've had interactions with the police department that make me think that they would respond, but.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think that police department needs to be informed of the situation. And that people in maybe recreating in the woods and encounter this and call them.
That is fair. That is definitely something we can do. Um.
I also would vote for the demolition.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does everyone want us to do that?
And it should be done carefully on those rock sites. What, you know, destroying the existing um cultural resource.
Say, one big thing is to try to change that website. Because that implies that they're authorized trails.
Right, and and it's not just, the other, you have to look at this in a bigger context also. This is not happening just in Schoolhouse Brook Park. The question is, is it happening in other town parks? Do we know? Is, is it happening on Joshua Trust property? Is it happening at Mansfield Hollow? Certainly, I don't know, and I'm thinking to myself. You know, maybe we need to get some partners here.
Yeah.
Get our heads together, think about solutions that would help all of us.
Um is that if this is going on in the Schoolhouse Brook Park, which is the one where we do have a trail that's allowed, at some point, if you abuse. A privilege, you lose it.
And that is my next point. I think there should be no authorized bicycling anywhere. So it is uniform. I mean, that is how this whole thing got started because there was that designated trail. And people said to themselves, oh, we can go bicycling in Schoolhouse Brook Park and went crazy. So I'm, I'm saying no bicycles. I think we need to start. Right from there. There are no bicycles in the town parks.
Simpson Wood, when we first looked at the property, there was quite a bit of evidence of bicycle pack travel. And now there's very little.
Right, and and that was from an abutter that was doing that.
They're riding there probably.
Yeah.
Moved on in life.
Think one thing to consider here though is if we, if we. Try to unilaterally. Deauthorize any biking. We're gonna get some pushback from Bike Mansfield.
That's fine.
And I think the thing is, is we need to bring this to Bike Mansfield and say, can you be part of the solution here?
I think that's a good way to look at it, is say, we can't let this continue, so.
So what do we do? Why are yours suggestions?
Right. And also I think we should go to Nembah. I mean, they were the ones who said, oh, you know, you want to put a new trail at Southworth, oh, we'll help, we'll maintain it. Of course, nothing has happened. But I think they are part of this picture.
So.
And and again, I'm still asking, is this a problem for other properties for Joshua's Trust?
I can.
Forest and Park, I mean, the Nipmuck Trail is on that map.
Doorwatt, I've seen people and talked to people that were riding in it. Um and I'm pretty sure there's riding happening in um um Moss Sanctuary.
And they're pretty certain Nipmuck Trail's getting traffic.
Yeah.
Yes.
Especially along the river there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's also an extensive trail system in the Mansfield Hollow area. And I've wondered if D, if they ever talked to DEP about can we do this, or they just did it since it's DEP who manages it.
Um but when, well, when we were at, when we were laying out the trail in Southwater with Tim Quinn, who's what? Regional manager or some title, there were people from the um. The mountain bike group, was it Northeast?
Um N- Nembah. The Northeast Mountain Bike Association. Right, and they promised all kinds of things and that was the last we have heard from them. Um I think, I think they should be part of this conversation, but the the question that I have, I mean. I don't think there is a way that we or any other. Organization can stop bicycles from using existing trails. I just don't think that's a reality. But I do think there should be an effort to stop the creation of trails.
Yeah.
Now, my question is, is the trust having a problem with these so-called social trails on their properties? Is, is this happening in Mansfield Hollow? I, I think we need, no, I think we need to talk to these people and find out.
I think it was John Hankins I have discussion with on this. Or might have been um Warren Church, that they have gone in and destroyed some of the structures.
Okay.
Maybe that's. Maybe that's the best way to get the structures out. Is to get somebody that's at least in the bicycle world, so maybe it would be quite.
The, my one, and I would like to. Follow up, maybe we can follow up with John Hankins and see, because I can see that to be basically a war of attrition.
Yeah.
You know, you know, you know, you know, somebody cuts the ramp up, somebody builds a new ramp and sudden. Suddenly you have a lot of trees cut down to build the new ramps.
Do we, do we never have an alternate contact with JT?
Uh.
Yeah, I've got multiple people at JT.
Yeah.
The, the, the new cadre, um Brian Avery, um Alex D'Amico.
Yeah.
And and whoever's in charge of. And and whoever's in charge of trails at Joshua's Trust.
Yep, that's that's Alex. I can speak with him.
Right, um for Mansfield Hollow, it would be the Friends of Mansfield Hollow. I'm not sure how active they are these days. I have not had a communication from them.
Was Tim Quinn that we met with and he was also on the um. He also showed up for the couple of the rec master plan listening sessions.
Matt Quinn, but yeah, um he's, I spoke with him relatively recently. He's also very busy, but.
Our tax dollars at work.
To uh. Deep. Uh and finding out how much of a problem is this statewide?
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
I will check if you want my hunch. Uh, deep doesn't have a handle on it. There are no handlebars on these bicycles, if you will.
Yeah.
I think at the very least, going in and pulling it apart means that it will be, and if we can. Stay on top of that for a bit in terms of trying to one walk, looking for these things and whatnot. Then what it will do is people will learn that their efforts to build more permanent things to make it appealing for them to. Ride around back there are not a good investment.
Do we have any sense?
Because it take, it, a lot, this was a lot of time on the park, so you know, if it doesn't. Pay off and it's not left there, then it isn't worth their while to build it.
The the thing, the thing is I'm destroying some of it. Some of it is built out of finished pressure-treated lumber. I've actually carried one of their shovels out of Schoolhouse Brook Park. It's a real nice garden, the shovel I use in the garden.
Do we have a sense of? What population this is?
I can't imagine it's large.
But is it, is it university affiliated? Is it locals? Is it high school?
No idea.
Camera trap.
Yeah, and that and that was one thought I had. Maybe we could try to have a security camera in the parking area. And we would be able to see who had bicycles and maybe even their license plate. I don't know if that's possible.
I'm putting cameras there anyways for the walk.
If you happen to serendipitously.
Put one around the.
Put one in an area such that you get people that are then identifiable, then. I think that we could use that, but I don't think, I I am not a lawyer. But I don't think that realistically, we are going to be in any sort of shape where we're going to be able to reliably catch the people doing it. Even if somebody calls the police and then the police go out there and then they park their cruiser and then they walk.
Yeah.
There is a decent chance that they will already be gone.
Yep.
Um, plus, the funny thing about it is that um normally. I would argue the cops aren't likely to shoot people riding away from them on bicycles. But if the cops are walking out to the site and then say, you there, stop, and everybody just gets on their bikes and rides away. There's not a whole lot that's gonna be done.
Yeah.
So.
They can't catch them and stop them on.
I think mostly what I would do is lose the camera. I think one of them would. Cut it off.
Yeah, quite possibly.
Yeah.
Um, but. What I'm hearing come out of this is you guys would like these destroyed? I will talk to. Uh public works and attorney about getting these down and taking them out.
There's also the issue, Michael, of there's little turnoffs of the official trails and they are so well ridden, they look like the real trail. So these brush, wherever there is a exit off the real trail, there needs to be brush, so that people don't get on that trail.
So I will, we've got lots of blazes, so I can make sure that the trails are properly blazed around.
Yeah, well, well, what we've done is Clover Mill Trail is the other one and what is it, Oak Ridge?
Uh, the rid, oh dear.
Yeah.
Uh, it's the Oak Ridge Trail, something like that. It it goes from the pond over to the bird loop.
That we've overblazed just so people could stand the chance of staying on the trail.
When the leaves fall. In the autumn, we will get some coverage on these places. So if we move now decisively, we may get people to not fill them in. And rake them back and work.
You may also have a chance of catching leaf blowers.
Right, cause then those are.
Right.
So, he, what you want me to do? Want me to take these part? I'll talk to Matt Quinn and JT, check in with you, talk to NEMBA. I will make sure that these are well blazed in the areas around them. I'll go to School State Park and I'll do this myself.
I think we've taken care of the ones who are aware of in Schoolhouse Brook Park.
I can just wander around and get lost in the woods for a while, that's fine. The last thing though.
Sounds like a good, sounds like a good way to spend the pleasant sunny afternoon.
That, yeah, that would be nice. I would like that, but uh if I do it, then there will be a flash thunderstorm uh while I am right out of the woods. Uh and I'm not a person who has much in the way of luck or good fortune.
Well, when when I was, when the first, when I started work on a trail crew for Forest Service. One of the first things the um, the district assistant did was take us out and watch the drainage. In pouring rain, so we could understand how things drain in the woods.
I used to do that, but now I don't go out when it's thundering.
Question. That'd be an interesting worker's cop claim.
Oh.
Given, given the. Status of these trails and the potential for serious injury to occur. Uh, should you have a discussion with the town attorney about how our rules that we post should read? To limit our liability.
I already did that. Um, that set of rules that I gave you is written entirely as. Nothing is allowed and we're only prohibiting things because that means we're not endorsing things. If we endorse something and say something is allowed. Then it means that that is generally accepted to be safe and if you are doing that in a normal manner, you should be safe while doing it. That is why things are written in a way that is a prohibition. Um, so I've actually already spoken with Kerma, who is the town's insurance carrier about that.
Should we add that that lists no rock climbing?
Um, rock climbing is an activity that in general is by default understood. To be dangerous. I am a rock climber. Um, everyone in rock climbing knows that if you go more than two feet off the ground. You can't always fall, crack your head and die. Um, it just happens. And it doesn't matter how good you are and doesn't matter how careful you are. Sometimes you just fall and you die and doesn't even have to be very high, so.
I've I've only taught one person to rock climb that I didn't feel that required to um. To to lecture on that too. He got interested in rock climbing, watching a um, a body recovery. Working on Cannon Mountain.
Oh dear.
I figured he caught on to the fact he could get hurt.
Last thing though, um would you like me to try to set up a joint meeting between yourselves and Bike Mansfield?
I think, I think they should be part of a larger meeting with.
Yeah.
All of these entities, Joshua's Trust, State Park, et cetera. I think, I think. They should be dealing with everybody.
I would push back on that a little bit, Vicky, for a first meeting. I think it is probably smarter to get people on board piecemeal to feel out initial.
That's fine, but I think eventually. Bike Mansfield needs to be thinking about all of the places, not just the town parks.
I I'm thinking I should call um. And talk with Lon, and I don't know whether we shared the Scott's letter with him first.
That's part of the uh, part of the public package.
Yeah, yeah. So, one of my projects that is pushed back a year because it's amazing how that happens is um. Rec Trails Grants. So if we, over the course, it is now September, Rec Trails Grants generally have a deadline of March. If we are going to be serious about figuring out how to deal with mountain bikes and if mountain bikes are appropriate anywhere, ever. And how to deal with mountain bikes in the wrong places, and we want to create a plan for it. We could use all of these preliminary discussions to draft a grant to specifically study this and bring in a consultant. And work on that and figure out how to make this stop in the places we don't want it and if it's appropriate anywhere. And if it is appropriate anywhere, can we in any way confine it there? What strategies would we need to use to stop it from spilling over? Is it feasible at all? Because.
No.
Bear traps and pungy pits are generally speaking not the tools we should use.
Bristol.
We should not use booby traps. Those are a war crime. Don't do war crimes. It's like the first rule of municipal government.
I thought it was, don't get in accidents and fill wetlands.
Uh, uh, those are the first things I think about. I don't think about committing war crimes in the first thing every day. That's my third thing I think about.
Yeah. Yeah, the.
Yeah, actually, it really surprises me that maybe it's just that it's too short. I've never seen a bicycle on. The trails at Marrow.
Neither have I.
Yeah, of all the times we, and I'm, I say sometimes where they're like every day for weeks and weeks and I've never seen a bicycle.
Well, they're too flat.
It's too flat and too.
It's too short.
Yeah, well, well, it's time, well, yeah. Um, I have, I have seen preschoolers.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm removing the uh, under, under age seven, you know, I've seen.
Yeah.
Little kids on their treadables and stuff.
We do have an executive session, Miranda, that's fair. I can see you slipping further and further and wanting to be home.
I'm gonna go to those pillows over there pretty soon.
So so should we go to executive session?
Yeah.
Cause we have a few a- action items. So do you have something else for staff report?
No, that's what you've got. Um, you've heard from me, that staff report. Um, so what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna stop sharing and I'm going to.
The lights are out.
Okay. Twenty seven.
I'm out of executive session.
So we need a, we should have a motion to act upon what we discussed in executive session.
I shall move.
Second.
Anybody opposed? Okay, now I guess the next item on it, it well, is uh. Future meetings, we kind of settled on this uh Thursday.
It works a lot better for me.
We happy with this time in general? This works?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Awesome. I will file the permanent new schedule with the clerk.
Okay.
So, let's see, second.
The second Thursday of every other month.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that brings us to item ten. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Anybody opposed?
Nine twenty-eight.
I have to go into my first stomach day of the year tomorrow.